Y'all ready? Dallas, you're not doing that. On that computer? Okay, I thought you were trying to move it. I said that. I know. Yeah. Yeah. All right, y'all ready? Y'all ready? All right. We'll call the Bryan County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 12th, 2021. For order please, and if you would, stand, we're doing an invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. You bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for all your blessings. Be with us during this meeting, Lord, and thank you for letting this group of men serve this county. And, Lord, be with us as we make decisions in the best interest of this county, Lord. Just be with our local firefighters, EMTs, and our military overseas, Lord, and just bring them home safe, Lord, and just heal this country, and let us have a great 2021, in your name, amen. Good job, we gonna pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the citizens, one nation, under God, in the midst of the mess of sin.
Thank you so much. Before we get started, you can have a seat. Before we get started, we're gonna have a couple, we gotta do a couple people swearing in, myself and Dallas. So, probate judge, actually first, let me say, welcome a few people. Billy Reynolds, our probate judge, thank you for being here. Steve, and then also, I'd like to recognize Mark Crowe. Mark Crowe's the new sheriff, thank you for being here, Sheriff. We appreciate it, and I want also to just thank Clyde Smith for his service to our county, and he's not here, but we wanted to thank him for his service. Dallas, you wanna come on up? Well, go on in here. And Billy, if you talk into that mic right here, or everybody. Hope I don't push any buttons on your computer. You're good, right there. I'll put my glasses on so I can see. Okay, congratulations on the election. Raise your right hand, we have two oaths to take. The first being the loyalty oath. I state your name. Oops, hold on. I heard Carter coming first. I state your name. A citizen of Bryan County, and being employee of Bryan County, and recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm, I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of Georgia, so help me God. I'm just gonna have you say your name this time, and I'll read it, okay? I state your name. Do swear or affirm that I will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Bryan County in all matters which require my official action to the best of my knowledge and skill, and I will so act as in my judgment will be most conducive to the welfare and best interest of the entire county. I have been a resident thereof for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of this state. I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and laws of Georgia, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations. I'll get you to sign in just a minute. Raise your right hand. I state your name. A citizen of Bryan County, and being employee of Bryan County, and recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia, so help me God. I state your name. Do swear and affirm that I will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Bryan County in matters which require my official action to the best of my knowledge and skill, and I will so act as in my judgment will be most conducive to the welfare and best interest of the entire county. I have been a resident therefore for the time period required by the Constitution and the laws of this state. Do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and not the holder of any other state office of trust of the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and the laws of Georgia, and I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations. And Donna, if you would come up here, we do have one more thing, we have one more presentation to do real quick. She is retiring, and she's been with our county for almost 42 years. I think she started when she was six? Six, 18? Yeah, six. But anyway, it's not often that we get to recognize somebody with that much service in our county, and again, we just wanna thank you. How many chairmans have you, you've been through?
Six.
Six chairmans and a bunch of commissioners.
Forty-something commissioners.
Forty-something commissioners, so she's seen it all. You're gonna be hard to replace, and again, we just wanna say thank you for your service to the county.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Wonderful. Thank you, Donna. Again, we wanna welcome everybody. Again, welcome to Mark Crowe, our new sheriff, and we look forward to working with you, sir. Right now, we need the approval of the agenda, so I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as submitted. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We need the approval for the December 2020 meeting minutes.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the December 2020 minutes as printed. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We do have, just to let everybody know, we do have Commissioner Covington and Commissioner Wallace, they're home tonight, so they are on Zoom, I think you can see them on your screen there, so that's why they're not here. But they will be voting, and they will be making comments, and they can hear, so. Anyway, now we need a motion to close this meeting, open up our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close the regular meeting to open up the public hearing. Second?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion cares. Okay. And Amanda, you are up, and the first one is SD 13147-20, North Bryan Properties LLC.
Okay, so this first item for public hearing, again, this is case number SD 3147-20. This is an application by North Bryan Properties LLC, represented by EMC Engineering, and they are requesting preliminary plat approval for the Interstate Exchange Commercial Subdivision. Now, this site is located right at the interchange of I-16 and Highway 280, this is across from the new Loves Travel Stop. This property was rezoned in 2010 to our CI Interchange Commercial Zoning District in anticipation of this further commercial development, and they're now presenting a preliminary plat, which is showing 10 total lots, nine of which are to be developed for commercial purposes, and the 10th lot, which is situated in the back of the development, which is identified for common open space in the detention pond. They do show an 80-foot wide right-of-way that connects that Highway 280, continuing through the development, and making a secondary connection to Oracle Parkway. In terms of this subdivision's impact on public facilities, it is anticipated to have the greatest impact on the sewer and transportation facilities. We originally began working with this preliminary plat earlier this year, and issues with sewer capacity were noted at that time. The plat has been on hold while the developer worked with the county on a potential sewer agreement. You will note that that is listed on your agenda further on for this evening. They have agreed to those terms of that agreement, and we're looking for that approval to occur this evening with the preliminary plat. In terms of the impact on transportation facilities, we do note that with their preliminary plat, they did submit a transportation impact study. One of the things that came out of that study was the further impacts that the development could have on that intersection at Highway 280 and Oracle Parkway. This is something that has been anticipated with other development occurring within the area, and we do know that in time, there will need to be some type of intersection improvement, and I think it's anticipated to be a traffic signal. With that, staff has had the conversation with them about a traffic contribution agreement, where they would pay their fair share towards the cost of that improvement, and that is something that they are working with the county on as well. So, with those two items, staff is making a recommendation for approval. Our Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting last week as well. But I do wanna highlight on page 65 of your package, that we do have a condition that that approval should be subject to the final water and sewer and traffic contribution agreements being approved by the Board of Commissioners prior to their construction plan approval.
Anybody have any questions on that? And comments? If anybody would like to come up, we're gonna do each of these individually. If the applicant would like to come up and speak for a minute, and then we'll get comments, and again, we're gonna do each of these individually. Are you the applicant? Okay, if you just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering, in Chatham Center South. What's your address? I can answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Anybody have any questions for him? Noah Jean, any questions? Okay, none? Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Anybody would like to come up and speak against, or for, or against this rezoning? No one? Okay. Amanda, we'll move to the next one, which is the SD 3170-20.
So, this item is also preliminary plat approval. This is for parcel number 034-021, and this is an application request from J.I. Interstate Westland LLC, they're represented by Thomas &amp; Hutton Engineering. Now, their preliminary plat request is for the property commonly referred to or known as the Kelly Tract. This property was rezoned in June of this year to I-1, our general industrial zoning district. The site consists of about 515 acres that's located in between Oracle Parkway and Old Collier Road. The applicant at this time is proposing the preliminary plat to establish a new 100-foot wide right-of-way, as well as a utility tract that will be used to serve a future pump station. The right-of-way and pump station are for those improvements needed in order to serve any further development of this site. That being said, staff is recommending approval of the proposed preliminary plat, with the understanding that as further development occurs, they are likely to come back and create further subdivision for new lots located along that 100-foot right-of-way. In general, staff's recommendation is for approval, however, I do wanna note a couple of items that came up through the engineering department, through the staff's review of this. The first being that the location of the utility tract that is currently shown on the preliminary plat is located around the area of the cul-de-sac, however, is only accessible by a 20-foot wide access easement. The engineering director has requested that the location of that utility tract be reconfigured so that it has direct frontage on the cul-de-sac, so that it's easier to access and maintain. In addition to that, the engineering director has also indicated that through construction plan review, they would like to see more details on the exact location of the connection of the new 100-foot right-of-way with Oracle Parkway, to make sure that it is located in the best location. In our discussions with the applicant during our Development Review Committee meeting, these items were brought up, and the applicant's engineer, as well as the engineering director for the county, agree that these were both minor amendments that could be addressed through the construction plan process, and would likely solve any further issues. So noting that these are minor issues, staff is making a recommendation for approval, but I do wanna highlight those conditions that are listed on page 120 of your package. The first one being a condition to address the final location of the utility tract for that pump station, and that second condition being the final location and positioning of that 100-foot right-of-way at Oracle Parkway.
Anybody have any questions for Amanda? Is the applicant here? Would like to come up and speak? And then we'll take anybody for or against? Any comments?
Good evening, Trey Wilkins with Thomas &amp; Hutton, 50 Parker Commerce Way, Savannah. As mentioned, we have no issues with the two conditions that are part of the approval.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Anybody wish to speak for or against? Ain't nobody? Okay, Amanda? Sorry. You're handing it off? The next case is the 239-10, it's a rezoning request.
So, this application is a rezoning request, I'll get the map to come up here in a minute, for two properties located at the end of Michael Drive, off of Highway 144. Both of them are currently undeveloped, and are currently zoned R1 or single-family. The applicant is requesting these to be rezoned to AR 1.5, which is an agricultural residential zoning, in order to have the option to place manufactured homes on them in the future, if that's what they choose to develop with. This is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which shows this area as low-density residential. In addition, it is surrounded by agricultural residential zoning, so it will remain rural and large-lot residential, so changing that will actually improve the zoning area, it's R1 right now. And there shouldn't be any additional burden on public resources, as again, it'll still be single-family with one dwelling per lot. So staff is recommending approval, and Planning and Zoning recommended approval, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions about that? Nope? Okay, and then if, is the applicant here? They wish to come and speak? You can come up and address it. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, Chris Farrell, my address 160 Cary Drive.
Okay.
Can I answer any questions? If anybody needs.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, no questions for that. Thank you, sir, for coming up. Anybody wanna speak for or against this rezoning? Ain't nobody? Okay. Okay, next, we have the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for North Bryan County for future land use map.
Okay, so this item is for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Now, I do wanna note before getting started, that this item is associated with items 5 through 9 on your agenda, which are the county-initiated rezonings. So for purposes of these items, we do think it would benefit everyone to hear the staff presentation prior to taking comment on individual items. So I'm going to begin with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to provide that background, and then I will hand it over to Ms. Audra Miller, who will speak specifically about the rezoning requests. So, for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, what the request is referring to is approximately 2,600 acres of land located in North Bryan County, in the northeast interchange of I-16 and Highway 280. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning spans a distance of land bordered by I-16 on the west, and Eldora Road on the east. Now, when we're looking at these properties in terms of the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map that the county has adopted, what we find is that this property is currently slated to continue developing under an agricultural and low-density character area. Now, whenever we talk about what this means in terms of how it's supposed to guide decisions that are made for rezonings, whenever we're talking about the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map, that's generally to serve as the framework, and set the boundaries and indications of how property is to develop and, you know, further be rezoned. Generally, whenever we present rezoning requests to you, a lot of what our staff report analysis will be based on is its compatibility with the Comprehensive Plan. When we find that items are not compatible with the Comprehensive Plan, the staff recommendation is generally for denial. The alternative is to amend the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map in order to align with the zoning that is desired. For Bryan County, we last updated our Comprehensive Plan in 2018, and we did a subsequent amendment that was adopted earlier this year. So whenever we're looking at these changes, we are looking at these as being an additional change to the Comprehensive Plan in order to align with what's being requested through the rezoning. What you should see on your screen at this time is really the impact of what that Comprehensive Plan Amendment would do if adopted along with these rezoning items, and you can see that we are talking about changing the character of that area in that quadrant of the county from that agricultural low-density character to that industrial character. Now, staff's recommendation with this is that if the rezonings are approved, that this item for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment be approved as well, so that that Future Land Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan can continue to reflect that approval and the desires of the county to move forward with that industrial character in this end of the county. So with that, unless there are any specific questions related to the Comprehensive Plan, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Miller, so that she can speak more about the rezoning requests.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Amanda.
There are five items on your agenda tonight for rezoning. They are items 5 through 9, and with the Commission's approval, I am going to do a comprehensive overview for all of them, and then speak individually for each rezoning. Since they are on your agenda individually, you will have to do a separate motion for each item. The Board of Commissioners has initiated the rezoning of seven parcels owned by five separate property owners. All seven parcels are currently zoned agricultural, which is A5, and upon approval, the properties would be zoned general industrial, which is I2. For the record, and to be very clear, when the applications were originally submitted, we were under the interim development ordinance, and the general industrial designation was known as I-1. I-1 in the UDO, which is the Unified Development Ordinance, is actually light industrial. We've verified with the applicant's representative, Thomas &amp; Hutton, that they do wish to have general industrial, which is I2, which is the more intense of the industrial uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for all parcels. Since this is a Commissioner-initiated rezoning, staff as a rule does not make a recommendation for or against the rezoning request. We simply recommend that the Board of Commissioners adopt the proposed conditions that have been presented for all seven parcels. So to provide a brief overview, Thomas &amp; Hutton submitted the five rezoning applications. The goal, as I said before, is to rezone the properties to I2. At this time, there is no developer for the property. What has been conveyed to staff is that the property owners wish to get the properties rezoned, and then they will sell to a third party, and it will most likely be multiple developers, multiple builders. The focus is manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution. As we move through the process, Thomas &amp; Hutton conveyed to staff that timing was critical, and that they needed to have a rezoning decision by January. This was a problem for staff because of our ordinance and our rules and regulations about how we handle rezoning requests in any application that staff is processing. For this reason, the only path forward was to see if the Commission wanted to make it a Commissioner-initiated rezoning, and that was agreed to by this body. As further explanation as to how we got to Commissioner-initiated rezoning, I wanna explain a little bit about community development and the role that my department plays in this process. We are community development, not economic development, and that's a very important distinction. I get requests all the time, and I've got them through my career, from applicants, from property owners, wanting to know if I can fast-track any application for economic development. As in other places, I do not have that authority under the Bryan County Code of Ordinances. My role as Community Development Director is not to advocate for economic development. That doesn't mean it's not a valuable part of the county, it just means it's not my role. My role is regulatory. I make sure the ordinances are enforced, that the policies are moved forward of this board, and that I follow the ordinance. With that, I had no way to bring this forward any faster, because in our interim development ordinance, and in our UDO, there are certain things that must be done before I present a rezoning application. For example, I must have a completed traffic impact analysis. With engineering, they have the option of asking for reports and studies related to infrastructure, such as water and sewer and stormwater management. To give you an idea of the timeline of where we were, the applications for rezoning by Thomas &amp; Hutton came in in October, specifically October 26, they were officially submitted. While it is a true statement that Thomas &amp; Hutton had been working with the property owners for many months, my department, engineering, public works, all of the county departments don't really move on anything or consider anything until we have an official application. The TIA did not come in until December 14, and the water and sewer study didn't come in until December 14 either. It would be impossible for us to put this on the agenda in January as a traditional normal rezoning application, because by ordinance, the engineering director has until January 29th to provide the first round of comments on the TIA. So with all of those restrictions in place with staff, that is why today. So with all of those restrictions in place with staff, that is why tonight, this is a Commissioner-initiated rezoning. So, the project, in a nutshell, is seven parcels that comprise 2,554 acres. To give you an idea of the scope and size... Oops, sorry. There we go. Thank you. To give you an idea of how large of an area that is, when I worked out west, land was divided into what's called sections. Sections are 640 acres, which is one square mile. So you're talking about one mile to the north, one mile to the east. That's how big a section is. So this would, if we were out west, be four sections of land, which would be four square miles. I point this out because Thomason Hutton has provided conceptual plan, and the conceptual plan is fine, but there are limitations with what I can see and what can be shown on the plan, let alone make decisions on. And one example I have is the buffers, and that's going to come up later in my presentation. The anticipated square footage for the entire project is 17.5 million square feet. According to the information that Thomason Hutton submitted with the DRI to the Department of Community Affairs, they are anticipating creating 10,000 jobs, and the timeframe for the full build-out is 15 years. As I said, most likely, there will be multiple developers and owners of this project, so there's not one unified developer like there was for Van Trust, or as there is with the Development Authority, where they develop in a comprehensive manner. In our initial discussions with Thomason Hutton, staff understood, and apparently incorrectly, that this was going to be one comprehensive development. What Thomason Hutton meant was the infrastructure is being master-planned, but the development is not. That means each parcel will be developed separately, and it could be further subdivided with multiple builders and developers with each parcel. So that makes some different challenges for staff. That doesn't mean it's wrong; it just means it creates some issues that staff has to work through with either Thomason Hutton or with future builders and developers. At the P&amp;Z meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a couple of concerns, and then the public had some concerns as well. For the Conley and Davis track, two of the P&amp;Z members voted against approval for those particular rezonings because they were concerned about the access from Eldora Road, and I will get into that in a little bit. In general, the public concerns had to deal with buffers adjacent to residential uses. In the UDO, the buffer requirement for anything against agricultural is 50 feet, and it gets reduced as you go with more intense uses. So the maximum buffer against anybody could be 50 feet if it was A5 property. The Planning Commission had questions about that. I cannot recommend a larger buffer, not because I don't think it's justified; I just can't recommend something at this time because of the scale and scope of the size of the project. If I even tried to show a 50-foot buffer on the conceptual plan, nobody would see it. So as we move forward towards development, there will be opportunities to revisit that issue. The public also had concerns about traffic impacts to existing roads, especially Eldora and Olive Branch. They questioned the source of the water and sewage for the project. On that issue, I can say, as this board is aware, the county is in a pretty significant sewer building project at the north end. They have just entered into an agreement with the city of Savannah, so the sewage will be handled through that agreement and those improvements. As far as I'm aware from the engineering director, the water shall be public, and that there is sufficient capacity to serve all of this. The public was also concerned about the lack of specificity of timing of improvements and development and the status of the agricultural exemption. On that particular issue, I do not know anything about agricultural exemptions; it's not under my department, so I can offer no insight on that about when the agricultural exemption would be removed from these properties if they're zoned I2. As a side, I also want to note, if these properties are rezoned, they go from A5 to A2, or, excuse me, from A5 to I2. I just want to state on the record, at that point, any use out there that is not allowed in the I2 zoning becomes non-conforming. That means that if there is a residence out there, I don't make them take it down; I just don't let them expand it. So if somebody's property doesn't sell as quickly, or they want to live on it for the next five years until they're ready to sell, they would not be able to add additions on; they would not be able to do an accessory structure. Anything that requires a building permit, I would not be able to issue, because that would technically be an expansion of the non-conforming use, and I just want to say that for the record. So what is on the screen in front of you is the overall conceptual plan that was prepared by Thomason Hutton. This rezoning, if approved, does not bind anybody to this particular plan, but according to Thomason Hutton, this is a fair representation of the yield these properties would have for industrial development. So Thomason Hutton feels it's a pretty fair representation of what could eventually come out there, but there's definitely going to be some changes as development goes forward. So, because we did not complete all the studies, and this is a Commissioner-initiated rezoning, staff has proposed conditions. These conditions are designed to kind of set milestones for things that must be accomplished before moving forward on the next part of the development. One of the things that I strongly recommend and I'm standing firm on is that there not be any development allowed that includes clearing and grading until all the studies are completed, and the timing of the infrastructure and how it's going to be paid for is worked out through these agreements. I know that the property owner's representative, Thomason Hutton, has had some issues with those conditions, and they can address their concerns to you when they come up. But the purpose of all these conditions, as I said, is to identify the required infrastructure improvements, establish a timing of the installation in relation to the site development, ensure a funding source, which is who pays and how, and ensure the seven parcels, while maybe not a master developer, are developed in a cohesive manner. A question has come up over the last couple weeks as to whether or not staff feels this rezoning is premature. That is really not something staff is concerned about at this point. Our concern is just to make sure that the infrastructure is in, that the impacts to the county are mitigated, the impacts to the surrounding property owners are mitigated, and that all of the funding is identified before development occurs. So, in your packet, there are proposed conditions. They start on page 190. Prior to the meeting, however, I handed out revised conditions. In discussing the conditions with Thomason Hutton approximately one day before the P&amp;Z meeting, they had some questions, concerns about a couple, so I went back and worked on them some more, and that is why I've got revised conditions, and I'll highlight the revisions for you as I go through. We have general conditions, and the first one is the uses. The uses are limited to the ones identified in the I2 zoning district as it exists today, and that's why the permitted uses table is attached to the conditions. The reason that I did that is the ordinance is not a static document. I don't know what's going to happen over the next 15 years, but I can pretty much guarantee you, there's going to be amendments somewhere along the line, and so some different uses could come into I2. If they come in and this condition is approved, the property owners at that time will not get the benefit of any additional conditions; they'll have to come back and amend these, because they are frozen with what is allowed today. There are specific uses, though, staff is recommending not be allowed. They are wrecking salvage and junkyards, smelting and refining operations, boat sales, hazardous waste processing, storage, treatment, or disposal, solid waste collection, combustion, landfills, or separation/sorting of recyclable materials from non-hazardous waste streams, and finally, mining and extraction. One of the P&amp;Z members wanted to know if that would preclude what we call the cut-and-fill work? No, that is what people do when they grade their site. That is fine if they're balancing it out between the properties; they remove some soil and move it to another site. This would preclude a true mining and extraction operation. Continuing with the general conditions, we are recommending that there be a master development plan that be submitted, and it be approved by the Board of Commissioners prior to development. This is one of the conditions that Thomason Hutton questioned, because they do not have one unified developer. So we modified condition number one to address that if it's done individually, that they have to bring individual development plans. The purpose of that is to provide more specificity to this conceptual plan, and on those types of plans, you would be able to see things like buffers, access, interconnectivity. It is at the board's discretion to schedule those types of reviews for a public hearing. It is not mandatory; it's not in the UDO, and so that would be something the board could request staff do when they come in. We also identified that it must be on public and water and sewer. Again, Thomason Hutton came back and asked if they could do temporary individual septic tanks, because they felt that maybe they needed to get development started, and the public sewer wouldn't be online. Staff said that they would be okay with that, with some caveats. The restrictions are that the engineering director can approve that at his discretion, and it's based on whether he determines sewer is not available within a reasonable timeframe, and then they have to tie into the county system within 90 days of availability. And that modifies condition number five. Again, the properties are to develop in a cohesive manner, so we're requiring the studies be applicable to all the properties. No access from Eldora Road, and that all Army Corps of Engineer permits are obtained. I don't have this one on the slide, but I need to point it out. I also modified condition number six under general conditions regarding the flood studies. Again, Thomason Hutton had a question about the timing, so I was more nuanced with it. This is important, because we are under the flood; we have our own flood management ordinance. That ordinance comes to us as a model from FEMA; it keeps us in good standing; it keeps us in the National Flood Insurance Program. So staff doesn't have a lot of discretion on modifying any of those requirements. But to be clear on it, we would say that we would permit clearing and grading and site work prior to a letter of map revision being approved, but no final plat or building permits can be issued until the letter of map revision is issued by FEMA. Also, on the site development side, which is basically what you see on the industrial individual parcels, they could begin if they did a CLOMAR. Finishing up the general conditions, we're requiring a property owners association to maintain the common areas and private improvements, including stormwater infrastructure not in the county right-of-way. Any obligation for the county to provide and fund infrastructure improvements must be agreed to in a development agreement or by individual agreement. And there's no subdivisions and no building or land disturbance permits, home occupation permits, or temporary use permits allowed until the zoning conditions are met. This is a really important condition, because if the property is rezoned, whoever owns a property has a zoning by right, which means they could come in the very next day and apply for a building permit, especially since they have frontage on different roads. And while the intent is to develop this industrial, somebody could come to a property owner and say, "Hey, can I have a temporary use on your property for a lay-down yard to storm my porta-potties," or something like that, and that's not the intent of the rezoning. So they would be precluded in doing that with this condition. On the specific conditions, and these are related to conditions required prior to development starting, again, the master development plan has to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. The studies and reports have to be reviewed and approved, and the agreements must be executed. We are anticipating a transportation improvement agreement, a water and sewer agreement, and potentially a development agreement. The agreements have to have a schedule and identify the funding mechanisms. I do know that through this process, it has been represented that there are template agreements, and this should be fairly simple. As a staff representative on this issue, I would not say that as an accurate statement. This is a huge project. Anyone who comes in is going to have a lot of infrastructure improvements associated with their site, and all of these developments are going to have to negotiate agreements with the county. The representative Thomason Hutton has said that they anticipate development starting in June of this year. That is a very tight timeframe because of how these agreements are worked, and if there's a development agreement, it involves a public hearing. I just point this out, because it is incumbent upon the property owners to move these documents forward. And if they really want to start in June, then they will have to start presenting stuff to staff to review. Lastly, I think this is "lastly," there are no building permits that will be issued until water and sewer infrastructure is installed. The developers are required to install all roads. The right-of-way dedication, if there's additional right-of-way needed for Olive Branch and Warrenell Farms, they're required to dedicate it to the county. For the state roads, if the state is not ready to accept the right-of-way, then we are going to require that the future right-of-way line be shown, and that they have to build from that. That modifies condition number four. Under the general conditions related to transportation, we added a fifth condition to address GDOT. We also require an updated traffic impact analysis if there's any significant changes, and an updated water and sewer master plan to analyze any increase in anticipated demand if there's a change. And so with that, before I move on to specifically to just highlight the parcels and the rezoning requests for the record, are there any questions about the conditions or anything I've said And just so it's clear for the record, the first rezoning is for what's known as the Blitston Timberlands LLC track. There are three parcels for that. Those numbers are 029023, 03302801, and 02902301. The P&amp;Z recommended approval with staff conditions, and for the record, and so it's clear, those were the original staff conditions, not the revised ones that I presented. Should the board decide to approve this rezoning with conditions, I would request that the motion include something to the effect with staff conditions as presented at the January 12th meeting, or something like that. Thomason Hutton did provide plans for each of the parcels. This is kind of a blow-up of the area from the conceptual plan. One of the things I want to highlight, and it's easier with individual plans up, as to why I think the agreements will need to be negotiated. There are questions about timing of improvements, specifically for me, traffic improvements, and one of the things that Thomason Hutton had recommended... And one of the things that Thomas and Hutton had recommended or suggested is that the improvements are basically timed with the property owner, the property owner that's adjacent to the improvement. I do not think that is what I would recommend or the path we'll take. We'll see where it goes once the TIA is done. But the reason for that is, as you can see on this plan, the intersection of Warrenell Farms Road and 80, you could have all of this development come in, and it doesn't touch that intersection. So you're going to have all that traffic in addition to existing traffic going through that intersection, as well as the one that's further down at Olive Branch. That could be problematic because that intersection will continue to degrade. So I have to have it timed with the impact, the level of impact that's coming on, and that'll be part of the traffic, the transportation improvement agreement that we negotiate. And that's so you can see it in relation to the overall conceptual plan. And then this is the parcels at issue. They're highlighted in blue. One of the things we also have to work out is, and it's very hard to see, but there is a road called Warrenell Road that is within the property boundary. According to the records from the Engineering Department and GIS, that is a private road. We will have to know what is going to happen with that road before they come in for development, whether it's going to stay private, whether it's serving anything, whether it's going to be abandoned, because that, that could be a potential point of access. The next property for rezoning is what we call the Herbert-Warnell Track. That is one parcel, and it is parcel 028029. And again, the Planning Commission recommended approval. Again, just to highlight some issues that will have to be negotiated, there is a new road being shown on this map. What we'll have to negotiate is whether that's private-public, all of those details that go along with constructing any new road, and the timing. And again, just to show you in relation to the conceptual plan. And then the track before you. The next track is what's called the Warrenell Farms Track. This one is one parcel. It is 028029. This is the track I have a question about, and I'll have to have Thomas and Hutton come up and confirm an issue about what exactly is being rezoned. This parcel has Olive Branch Road splitting it. There's also the intersection improvements to Olive Branch Road that are potentially going to be required on the traffic impact analysis. And one of the things I want to highlight, why a condition of saying the adjacent property owner will do those improvements? If I was the developer, I would probably start splitting off parcels, and you can parcel this out and avoid improvements for a very long time based on if you're adjacent to it or not, such as the one, the building that you see further to the right, I would, you could parcel that out, and they could get away with not having to do any improvements, and so on, and so on. And again, just in relation to the conceptual plan, the question I have about the zoning and what's included or not included, there is a triangular piece. It's bordered by Warrenell Farms, Warrenell Farms Road and Highway 80. It was not included in Thomas and Hutton's rezoning request. It isn't shown as being rezoned, but it is under the same parcel number as all the other segments. There's one parcel number. So for the record, staff has just, is under the impression that piece is not being rezoned, and it will stay A5. If that is wrong, then I do request Thomas and Hutton clarify and say that it should be included. The next one is the Ben and Willie Conley property. Again, it's one parcel, 028031. And again, the P&amp;Z recommended approval with conditions. This parcel and the next one is one that I have to be very cognizant of in moving forward and what I approve or don't approve. Their only access right now is off Eldora Road. If the condition is approved, that there's no access from Eldora, they are landlocked. There is no way for them to access that property except off a residential driveway, and that cannot be used for industrial. In order to have access, they have to get an easement from the Blitston property. I am the one that will have to make sure that happens in some manner. Because if these properties get divided out and there are multiple developers, the developer of the Blitston property could very well say, no, I'm not going to give those people an easement. Why should I do that? So I have to make sure that property owner doesn't become landlocked and they have no access, because if that happens, then we have to remove the condition for Eldora Road not providing access, because legally, we can't landlock a parcel. And that's why those agreements become critical and understanding exactly how all this is going to fit together. And you can see this much clearer on the zoning map because you can see how the parcel will become landlocked. And lastly, there's the estate of Margie Davis Track, and it has the same issue. It is parcel number 03302401. The staff, the Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions. And this one is even more landlocked because it either has to go through wetlands and get easements that way, or it's going to have to go through the Conley Track and then go through the Blitston Track. So I have to be cognizant of not landlocking that one either, or again, we have to open And then lastly, just to represent what the area would look like if all these properties were rezoned, sorry, look happy. And I've lost it. I apologize, but we did have a map to show the entire area rezoned, but I've lost it through the slide presentation. So with that, that is the end of my presentation. I am available for any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? For Audrey? Questions?
What are the, the landlocked issue? That would be solved through an agreement we're requiring prior to.
Yes. I would, somewhere along the way, yes. It would probably be laid out in the transportation improvement agreement that we would identify that easements or access is needed, and then as we move through preliminary plat process, we'd want to see those easements. The, the issue that I have is if the properties are separate, I have to somehow bring in a party that may not be looking for a development permit, if that makes sense.
Any, any other question? Comments from the commission? Okay, we'll invite the applicant to come up and speak. If you want to make a few comments on some things. State your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, thank you. No, it's the, it's the other one. It's the one that's got the yellow stars on it. That's it. Thank you. Yes. And everybody's, I'm Ralph Forbes with Thomas and Hutton in Richmond Hill, Georgia. Couple of things to try to get started. I know you guys are. What do you, y'all got the access plan on the screen? A couple of things brought up that was, that was mentioned that Audrey brought up, and there were a couple of conditions, and the staff has been working with us on a lot of them to address some of the concerns. There is one more, and I'll go through that in a minute, but a couple of things that she mentioned that I want to, want to bring up that from the last P&amp;Z meeting, specifically as it relates to Conley and, and Davis tracks. I'll do that one first. Those are the easiest. But we did, we did listen last week, this week during the time between the P&amp;Z meeting and this meeting. We, we looked at the 100-foot buffer we had there originally and looked to see if we could expand that to 150 feet and possibly build a 10- to 15-foot berm with a 10-foot top with landscaping like you see in a lot of cases for industrial development, and found that we had room to put that in there and still allow for the development we look for. So as we get into more specific detail with it, we'll, we'll look at doing that. As Audrey mentioned too, you know, the way this was set up originally, as always, was, was, you know, this is a rezoning, and we've got, as she mentioned, I think it's four or five months, she thinks it's more, but you know, all the things that's going to come after this is, is a master plan approval where you drill down to each individual parcel once the developer is onboard, a water and sewer agreement, a transportation agreement, and those things. But eventually, you know, this, again, as we looked at this before, and I spoke to y'all back in October, you know, for the county's perspective, we're looking at roughly about 17, 18 million square feet, roughly $1.2, $1.3 billion investment, capital investment over time, and about 10,000 jobs. We have tried to work with staff over the last several months. We have done on the property owners. They have all pitched in and invested in the excess of probably $150,000 to go in and do a traffic plan, a traffic study, and it encompasses everything from Highway, from Interstate 16 to the Bullock County Line to the river, 280, that whole quadrant. We studied not only just the 2,500 acres, but we studied the whole area, identified what was needed in five years, 10 years, and 20 years, and kind of identified that within that, that plan that was submitted. Same thing on the water and sewer. We've done a water and sewer master plan, pretty much covering the same area, determining what would be needed over time, what the recovery charges would be that would be coming back to the county as it gets put in to serve not only this 2,500 acres, but the whole amount. So all that's been submitted, the drainage master plan's been submitted, how the drainage would adhere to the, the area based on the existing conditions. All those have been in and pretty much established as far as the, right now, what's being planned on the transportation side. On Highway 80, we met with the DOT four times, three or four times with the county staff. It's determined right now that the DOT is looking to five-lane Highway 80 within a 10-year period on a program project of the Chatham County Line all the way over to 119. During that timeframe, within the next 10 years, some of the implement, things that had to be implemented individually by the developer that comes in, and you'll see it on your plan, what you see in a yellow star is what was determined with working with the DOT and the county, that we'd have four access points. You know, I know Audrey mentioned like on Olive Branch about someone, you know, coming in and doing something without having to do any work. It's not the way this was laid out. It's not the way it's been presented. But the intent would be at Olive Branch, that would be one full access point along I-80 that would serve this development. The next one's at Warrenell Farms Road, and then the next two, one going into the Herbert-Warnell Track, and then the next one that you see on the very end, one that goes in to serve the backside of Alcova. So there's four full access points that's been identified and approved with GDOT and the county to, to develop, you know, to locate and develop, to put in for this development. Some intermediate right-in, right-outs would be in between that meets DOT regulations, but the four access points would be the points that would be needed. As far as Warrenell Farms Road, what that's established pretty much is being the development that does Alcova property will have all the access on, on this backside over there would be the ones serving Warrenell Farms Road. They would be the ones responsible for widening and improving Warrenell Farms Road, as at this time, it's not in condition to, to serve industrial development. So that road would need to be improved and widened to serve it. And so that would be something that the developers would do on the backs of, of their development along there. As far as the comment about the Davis and the Conley piece, as far as access goes, we've established a road network internal. Audrey's right, that would have to be an agreement in place if, by say, a developer came in and bought all of Alcova but did not buy Conley and Davis, we would have to work in agreement. I've talked to the property owners about that, and they're aware of it to where when we do deal with a property developer that comes in, they will be aware that they will have to have some kind of access agreement. I will tell you right now that the intent is, and the developers just looked at that, would not only buy Alcova, but they would go in and acquire Conley and Davis at the same time, encompass all of it, so we would, would dispel that, that issue. But yeah, that's, that's, it's been talked about, it's been discussed, been looked at, and all those things would have to be addressed during the specific time. As far as the other transportation go, one of the things the traffic study did identify within the next five years is, is possible improvements at 280 and Highway 80. You know, we looked at a lot of different situations that it could be aroundabout, could be dual left turn lanes, the different cost estimates we put together. The highest was somewhere in the $4 million range. This development, what we set up right now for it to be that we presented to the county as part of our traffic study and our traffic improvement analysis, determined that this 2,500 acres would roughly pay around 10 cents a square foot. That would go towards the improvements to where they'd have around 50% of the improvements paid for by this development solely at the intersection of 280 and, and Highway 80. And that's what's been presented. That would be part of their contribution. It was also set up on a per-trip analysis for the land outside of here, again, from 16 to Bullock County Line to the river down to 280, and anything develops in there, there's a, there's a method set up that they could pretty much get contributions for those, that intersection for that. The only thing the DOT has asked for on Highway 80 for the five-laning was it would be for that the road that we go ahead and set aside a right-of-way. It's been discussed with the property owners, and during the course of some time when the development's done, developer comes in, it's been established that, that we will dedicate that right-of-way. We've laid it out what the five-lane looks like, and we will dedicate that right-of-way along Highway 80 to account for that five-lane in the future. Let's see what else there was. As far as Eldora, as I heard Audrey mention, early on in the game, we talked about we would have no traffic on Eldora. We still intend to do that. Everything funnels towards Highway 80 and Warrenell Farms Road with no traffic on Eldora Road. Same thing on Olive Branch. Only thing you see on Olive Branch is where it comes into the development. We would, you see Olive Branch now coming in at an angle. The DOT has asked us if we would 90-up that, pretty much make it perpendicular to 80. We will do that when the development occurs. The same thing with Warrenell Farms Road when it comes in. As far as the water and sewer plan goes, we've master planned it to serve this area. It was going to take a, a new well out there along with a tank. The well would be put in underneath the existing permit that the county has with EPD, and then with, put a new tank in that would serve, you know, not only this development, but everything out in that, that quadrant. We'll put a pump station in that will pump sewer back towards the pump station that we're pumping to. we're pumping to Savannah. And all this would be work to be in place sometime between now and the end of 2022 is the game plan. Let's see what else. Timing, I know Audrey talked a lot about the timing. Again, the intent of this is to get zoned is to spend the next four or five months or so trying to get the master plan and agreements worked out and approved by staff in the county. And then start roughly design with construction starting sometime around September of 2021 with the intent that we complete somewhere around September of 2022 in that neighborhood. Let's see. And again, the whole intent of that is to have the water and sewer infrastructure that's going to serve this development and whatever else may come, because I kind of believe that there will be some other stuff coming on the outskirts of this sometime in 2021, whether it's residential, multifamily, or extra commercial property there at Eldora and 280. So we're trying to get the infrastructure in place to where you guys can serve all that at the same time, too. The key component of that is, and I know one of the conditions that came up that was in there, the only, the rest of the conditions were fine. The county staff has worked well with us, and we appreciate that. The only one that I really, really want to look at and just take note of is the one where it said no building permits for vertical construction be issued, you know, until the required water and sewer infrastructure is installed and accepted by the county. The only thing I'd like to do there is, in a lot of cases, in most cases, especially in the economic development world, you're always running water and sewer while buildings being built, you know, as we entertain economic development projects coming in. It's never, it never fails that we've always got to do something with water and sewer while the building's being built. And it pretty much, when you do a Georgia Ready for Accelerated Development, that's what you have to set up and do that at any utilities you have to do. You can do it 12 months, which is about the same time it takes to build a building. So that's the only one out of all the conditions that I really would like to look at doing something different, because the timing was, I really would like to see the water and sewer infrastructure go in at the same time that the buildings and all are being built to where it occurs at the same time. As far as the infrastructure goes, we're working with county staff right now to determine what's the best way to do that. Right now, the way the water and sewer master plan is set up is for, per se, the county to do it and then be recovered by TAP fees. We've established what that number is, knowing that that right now could be an issue with where the resources are being focused, you know, getting our sewer to the city. At this time, we're looking at alternatives of how we might could do that in exchange for, you know, something other than the county expanding it. So I think I've addressed most of them. Before I said, if there's any other questions come up? I think I addressed...
Anybody have any questions for Ralph?
Yes, sir.
No, I said, does anybody have any questions for Ralph? No, no other questions. Thank you, Ralph. This is a big project, lots going into it on everybody's part, so thank you, Ralph.
Mr. Chairman, two things. One, if Mr. Forbes, Ralph, would confirm my understanding of that little triangular piece, that it is not included in the rezoning, I would appreciate it. And then we have a request from Patricia Wilson. She wants to speak. She has a family emergency, and she wanted to know if she could go first.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Ralph. You can come on up, just come up and state your name and address, please, and we'll give you a couple of minutes. And we're going to get everybody a chance to speak that wants to speak. So please be patient. If somebody says something that's already been said, you know, we don't need, we don't, you know, need to see it again or hear it again. So just everybody be aware of the time, and we'll give you a few minutes to talk. So go ahead, ma'am. Just state your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Patricia Wilson. I live at 1369 Eldora Road. My parents are Walter and DeeDee Williams, and they live at 1347 Eldora Road. My parents can't be here tonight. My father's in ICU, but I'm here on their behalf. And one of the things that was, I actually watched the meeting from last week. I couldn't be here in person because I was sick. And one of the things that was addressed last week that wasn't brought up this week was flooding. There is a big issue with flooding over on Eldora Road. Last week, it was brought up by the gentleman who owns the motorcycle shop down the road that at some point the water does cross Eldora Road. I have pictures, okay, and I'm going to pass them, the big pictures. There is a drainage canal that goes behind my residence. It starts on the, I believe, on the Conley track, okay? That's where that drainage canal starts. It goes through our property, through our neighbor's property down, and eventually it empties out into the Oguchi River. What happens is that drainage canal, when it's not maintained, and it hasn't been, we get a lot of rain, we get tropical depressions or hurricanes, it will flood, it will back up, and water comes into people's yards, and eventually it goes across Eldora Road. So the big pictures I have for you guys are what my father has done with the drainage canal. He actually turned it into a lagoon to help mitigate some water, okay? And then I have pictures from 1989 when it flooded. So I'm going to...
Think they're on the screen, too?
Yeah, they're on the screen right here.
Yes, okay. So also on the screen, the pictures I have for you were from 1989. So you're like, oh, that's a long time ago. Well, this, the pictures that I have on the screen are actually from my residence about two years ago when it flooded again. And every so often, it floods. It needs to be addressed. I know that they, the development has talked about lagoons, that these lagoons are going to be here to capture the runoff. And that's wonderful, that's great. Are you going to have enough lagoons, okay? Once the lagoons get full, they're going to go to this drainage canal. Is the drainage canal going to be big enough to handle all the runoff? Because now that we have parking lots, now that we have roads, that soil is not going to be there to soak up the water. So what's going to happen to my residence when all of this runoff is coming towards my house? So that's one of our main concerns. My next main concern is about the buffer, okay? I know that he said that they could have a buffer of 150 feet. That's 50 yards. There's people who can make a field goal at that distance. So you're telling me that you're going to put a warehouse the distance where someone could kick a field goal? I mean, a really good kicker, okay? So that's a little bit of a concern for me and my parents about having that type of development that close to my home. I have a six-year-old, and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old. I grew up on that piece of property. I want them to have the same type of childhood I had, that piece of property, not surrounded by warehouses. Another thing that other people are probably going to talk about, that we heard about last week, traffic, noise, light pollution, noise pollution, and all of those things. But my main concern was the flooding, and that is what, and plus the buffer. And that's what I wanted to bring to you, gentlemen and ladies, tonight. Thank you very much for allowing me to have this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak for or against? Again, if you'd just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nate Fichtorn. My in-laws live at 220 Highway 80, and I'm here on their behalf tonight. My biggest concerns with my engineering background, looking at this, are, is the vagueness of this whole plan. There is lots of nice numbers, like 10,000 jobs and $1.4 billion investment, but none of that's solid. There's not even developers lined up. There's none of that here. And there is a bunch of undeveloped land over at the industrial center right off 16 that has been undeveloped the entire time that I've been, that we've been, I've been with my wife when we've been in the area. So given that we have a lot of undeveloped industrial area there, the question becomes, do we need a whole bunch more that is going to put in warehouses and things? And according to this, could be anything up to, not including smelting, but any other kind of manufacturing industrial use that's not really defined on the map. The pamphlet that was given out talked about warehousing. There was, but then that was changed and is not just limited to that. I looked on the DOT website to see about these improvements for Highway 80 that are planned, and I didn't see any mention of future plans for updates on Highway 80 in this region. So if there are DOT plans, they're still at the very vague conceptual stage and have not been finalized at all yet. In addition, the Warnell Farms tract, part of that seems to be within a mile of the neighborhood that my in-laws live in. There's the, I think, a couple dozen houses right in there. There's tracks butt up against that pretty close and seems to be within a mile, which is not what the pamphlet also said. So, yeah, those are my biggest concerns, is just how vague this all is and how much of it seems to be not really backed up with anything to show the benefits yet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. If you'd just state your name and address for the record, please.
Shannon Crayman, 890 Old Olive Branch Road. I do want to start out and say that I am a strong property rights supporter. So I do understand what we're looking at here and what impact it could have. But with that same statement, I also understand that that's the reason what we have planning and zoning and the county commission to keep everything in perspective. And so that what somebody does with their property doesn't affect other people, just like you wouldn't want me dumping waste in my yard. It kind of goes with that same principle. I've got a concern about light pollution at night. We've got 10,000 new jobs coming in. Are these all at the industrial park? Is this the industrial park plus trucks plus the construction? And with that being said, where's the infrastructure for these people going to be? Where's the restaurants? Where's the facilities going to be? Where are they going to go eat lunch? How many shifts are we going to be running? Little concern there. Sewer. I was listening to that. There is that, forgive me if I'm ignorant to some of this stuff. I've had to get really smart really quick because this has really gone through fast. But what I heard this evening was that they're going to get the waiver to use lagoons and septic until the infrastructure provided by Bryan County has been put in place within 90 days they have to tie in. What happens if 90 days never comes? What if we never get it out there? There's always that, you know, proposal where things are proposed and it never comes to fruition. We're stuck with industrial park on septic. The buffer of 100 feet, 150 feet, I agree with the folks over on Eldora. I've got 1,000 feet behind my house. It's all trees, it's swamp. I can hear the hotten pickers running in the fall. I can hear people talking when the wind blows just right, and they're out in the field. So, I mean, it's dense swamp forest. I don't buy into the buffer. I do have a big question about stormwater, as I just mentioned. I've got a swamp in my backyard. The drainage from Highway 80 down to I-16 is 18 inches. You couldn't go in and put a canal in there if you wanted to. Where is the overflow going to go on the Warnell Track property? I understand that there's retention ponds and lagoons, but we get a Matthew come through here, we get something like Floyd come through that, thank God Floyd didn't hit us. But if we get something that comes in here and pours four feet of water on us, those lagoons are going to fill up. Lagoons are going to have stand pipes. And then it's going to run where? The five-lane, what impact is this going to have on Blitston? The businesses in Blitston? What's going to happen to the IGA? What's going to happen to Parkers and everything up to the river? I mean, that's going to take a pretty small, a pretty big chunk out of Ken's parking lot, I'm pretty sure, and the IGA, and then residents going up to the river. So I wish that everyone would take those into consideration. I don't want to get long-winded. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Somebody else? Ralph, you want to address some of those questions? I didn't write them down, Ralph, so I hope you got them. I think you got the general questions right.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Audrey, I do, before we get started, address the public's questions. Can you help explain to me which triangle you're talking about? Because if it's the, if, why is she getting...
Sorry about that, ma'am. I didn't see you raise your hand. You come on up. Excuse me, Ralph. Let her speak. I'm sorry. If you'd just state your name. Sorry about that again.
My name is Jennifer Langston Fichtorn. I live at 220 U.S. Highway 80. And, you know, as stated before by my husband, we are a little worried that the Warnell Track comes within a half-mile of the coveted neighborhood that my parents have purchased their property in, and that property is now going to be inherited to us, and how that doesn't actually fit in with the initial plan that was created or even the initial plan that was, you know, given at the last meeting. My big question is, as we already know, Bryan County has water issues, and I am worried about the amount of wetlands and how that is going to be affected by possible pollution in this area, especially because I have a well, and that's where my drinking water comes from. And I want to know what the county's going to do to protect my drinking water in this particular situation. And I worry about this. I know that we said, we talked about water issues, but we're also talking about water issues on a conceptual plan that has no guarantee that it'll go to a cohesive master plan because we don't actually have investors at this point in time. My other background is in preservation, so kind of the character area of what we're going on here. And I want to know what's going to happen to the Warnell Residence, which is indicative of, you know, the growth that occurred in Bryan County. I believe, I was told that it was owned by the master engineer for the bridge that was originally built between Bryan and Effingham County over Oguchi Road, and how that particular structure and other structures that are on the properties are going to be handled to kind of, you know, cement and solidify the historic nature of our agricultural heritage that we have here in northern Bryan County. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay. All right, Ralph, you want to come up and just address some of those questions they had, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I might have missed a couple of her first ones as I was talking to Ms. Audrey, but we got the property straight. So the biggest, a lot of the questions came up about drainage. And, you know, one of the things that everyone has to recognize is that, you heard Audrey tonight talk a lot about the UDO and the county's ordinance, and they have a very strict ordinance on what you, you know, have to do from your stormwater when you plan these areas, what you have to retain during, you know, the 25 and 50-year storm events and what you can release, you know, how you have to attenuate the first inch and all those things. So all those are in there to protect not only runoff from those properties, but also adjacent wetlands and all from a purity standpoint. So those things we have to adhere to, like most engineers, we have to do that on a regular basis. But if you look at the map, basically, you know, one question came up about, you know, do we have enough ponds? You know, if a hurricane comes through, I'm going to tell you, the answer is no. We don't have enough ponds for a hurricane to come through. I don't think anybody does. But that's just the way it is. But we do have it to meet the ordinance. We do have an excessive amount of blue on those maps, and the reason being is the soils I hear are very good soils. We will be mining the material from those lagoons. We will be mining the material from those lagoons to fill where the buildings are going. So that's why you see, we normally use about 10% surface area for our ponds. In this case, we're probably close to 20 to 25% because we need that volume of dirt to build our buildings. So as far as the other drainage goes, again, our intent is to retain the water, release it at pre-development rates to meet the UDO and the county ordinance they have for the drainage. During the course of it, as we get site-specific into those parts of it, when design actually starts happening, then we will, if there's issues downstream and all, we'll try to bring it to county's attention and try to address it at that time. If there's any, you know, beavers or anything else we find, you know, that might be blocking drainage ditches. As far as the uses go, I know I heard one comment about uses, you know, what, and he's right, there's some land that the Development Authority has there that is still left there that it's, I think what's coming may take up a couple more parcels and they won't have much left. But it's not only that, it's set aside for manufacturing. What I see, the most of this used to be on this land will be what's being generated based on if you hear and read, what you're hearing and reading these days about the supply chain and the e-commerce and the days of going and shopping at a mall due to pandemic and all, as the days are winding down and more people are shopping by online through different facilities, where those facilities that you'll see here, whether it be a Home Depot, a Walmart, a Target, you know, Amazon, whoever it may be, pick one, it'll be the ones that'd be kind of like locating here because just like Spree Tales out there right now, they're an e-commerce company. And Bryan County had the fourth thought five, six years ago when the Governor Deal put the notice out to commissioners to give, you know, for the free port exemption. You guys went in and passed it. It gives a big uptick to people, communities that have done that to allow them to bring e-commerce type facilities into the county. That's one of the things that's probably going to be coming in this area and be attracted to it. So I don't know if you'll see much manufacturing out here. I think mainly you'll see the e-commerce type warehouses here, like Medline, it just located on the south end of Bryan County in the Commerce Center over there off of 95. I think that's the type of facilities you'll see coming here. As far as the wetlands go, I know there's a comment came up about the wetlands. What we've basically done is through RLC, we've identified all the wetlands on all the properties. The property owners have paid for that. As I mentioned earlier, they've probably paid an excessive $150 grand to get their properties all set up to do this, plus the studies. And the wetlands have been identified. We have jurisdictional termination by the Corps. There is some permits that's in the process right now, wetland permits for impacts. Most of it very minimal as we're trying to work our way outside the wetland areas for this development with retaining, you know, a good bit of the wetlands that's on site. Let's see what else I had. We talked about the drainage. I think that's about it, Chairman. If there's anything else that you can think of that I missed?
I think that's it. Thank you, Ralph, for addressing those issues.
Anything else?
Anything else? Okay. All right.
I think he asked a question.
Ralph, can you repeat that question? Ralph?
My question is about how the patchwork nature of the development will affect the lagoons and the drainage because there won't be a single site master plan. It'll all be done with each individual development.
You know, just to give some clarity, again, you've got, if you look at it as such, I think, just to clarify, I don't think you'll have somebody come in and buy one building. A developer will come in and buy, say, all of Herbert Warrenell's property. It's about 600 acres, about 450, 480 acres of upland area, developable area, and someone will come in and buy that piece by itself and develop those five buildings you see on there. The same thing with Alkova. Somebody will come in and buy all of Alkova and develop it and hopefully include Conley and Davis with theirs and develop those six or seven buildings there. So I'll try to address that question the best you can. When the master plan is done and you pretty much see it the way it's sitting there now, before the first building's ever done, that lagoon will be put in place. Again, I can't help saying enough that it's not only for stormwater, but it's to get the borrowed material needed. Each of these buildings are going to have to be filled some to get out of the water table, so that dirt will be used to fill for these buildings. So you, and plus on top of that, the county's not going to allow you to build one building without having detention in it for, or retention for their, each specific building. They want to prove it. So I don't know, I guess that addresses it.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ralph. No, that's it. That's fine. Thank you. So, sir, you can ask a question. We're not going to have, this is not a time to ask questions, it's time to make public comment. And we let him make a question. If you have a quick question, fine. Okay.
My major concern, Shannon Croyman, 890 Old Olive Branch Road. My concern is the stormwater. I understand that the Environmental Protection Agency has guidelines and everything set forth, where all this stuff's supposed to go, how much it's supposed to be retained. And I'm sure the engineer has done his due diligence, but should a hurricane come, where does the overflow go? Where will it go? There's, where will they be allowed to discharge it? Because right now, Warrenell Farms LLC drains into my backyard. And if we go putting concrete up and all this and it runs into storm drains, runs into their lagoons, when that lagoon fills up, where will it drain? It's got to go someplace. I don't think anybody's going to let it run out into the public right-of-way ditch because it's just going to run down the ditch, either Highway 80 or off Olive Branch Road, run down toward the end, and then back in the swamp where I live. And the swamp doesn't drain. It's constantly full. We've had four inches of rain. I've got standing water. Nothing moves. Again, it's because between myself, Warrenell Farms, Highway 80, and I-16, between the two highways, it drops 18 inches. There's not enough drop between the two to get water to move. So, I mean, if we do have a hurricane, the lagoons fill up. My concern is where's the discharge go? The thickness of a dime across a plain surface of a football field, which is equivalent to an acre, is 5,000 gallons of water. Think of that at an inch, how many gallons that's going to be? Where does that water go? Is overflow and they discharge it into my backyard? That's where my concern is, and that's where the answer's not been provided. Are we going to have a pumping station that pumps it into the sewer? No, we can't do that because it's stormwater. So, I mean, that's a big concern for me.
All right.
I don't want any more water in my backyard.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I'd argue that second reading of the map, Amanda, excuse me. This is item number 10. Amanda, our public here.
Okay, while we're waiting for the presentation to change, this item is the second reading of the ordinance to adopt the updated zoning map. If you'll recall, the Board of Commissioners adopted the Unified Development Ordinance at your December meeting, and the zoning map changes that we are proposing now are reflective of those zoning district changes that were implemented with the adoption of the UDO. This is where certain zoning districts were either renamed, eliminated, or consolidated in order to make a more efficient use of our zoning map. Now, we have had several public hearings. We had a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 27th, and we had your first public hearing on this on November 10th. To date, I do not believe that we have received any public comments. However, we did go ahead and advertise this as a public hearing to give the public one more opportunity to speak on these changes. The staff is making a recommendation that you approve the ordinance to update the zoning map, and the Planning and Zoning Commission at their public hearing in official action recommended approval as well.
Do we have any comments on that? No comments? Okay, thank you, Amanda. And then, Audra, I guess you're going to talk about the first reading, which requires no vote.
Okay, I don't see the screen changing, so we'll just do, we won't have any visuals. This is first reading of an ordinance to amend the Development Impact Fee Ordinance of Bryan County. The background on this is in 2020, the Board of Commissioners adopted the Unified Development Ordinance, and the Board of Commissioners approved the updated impact fee schedule with the adoption of your 2021 county budget. With these changes, the Development Impact Fee Ordinance needs to be amended. There are basically two amendments. The UDO, when it's codified, is going to change the, change the structure of the ordinances. It's repealing certain sections, replacing others, and so what happens is we leave the Development Impact Fee Ordinance in a very weird location. It becomes Appendix D, and there are no other appendices before it. So we recommend that we repeal and replace, and that's how you have to do it. You have to repeal and replace it so it becomes Chapter 115. The second issue is with the updated impact fee schedule. There are references in the ordinance about this, so we need to include a new, we need to include the updated schedule. Staff doesn't have the authority just to substitute in. The board has to approve it.
Okay.
Thank you. And what you should have in front of the screen is just a snapshot of the current ordinance, and you'll see it's Appendix D, and we're going to, we've repealed A, B, and C. The UDO is going to be Chapter 114, and the impact fee ordinance will be Chapter 115. The current language of the ordinance in the fee schedule section, it says you adopt the new fee schedule or any changes to the fee schedule by resolution. The second section is in the fee certification, it references the attachment to the fee schedule. So the amendments, staff is proposing to change the fee schedule, to change it by resolution to actually attach it, attach the schedule to the ordinance, and then for the certification, we are just including the new schedule. The fee schedule itself, it was included with the impact fee study update that was done in June of 2020. There was a public hearing involved with that. The impact fee schedule then was included in the capital improvement element to the comp plan, and that Second Amendment was officially adopted October 13th, 2020. And then again, we included the amended impact fee schedule with the 2021 budget, which there were public hearings involved with that, too. So this is what I would consider kind of a perfunctory issue because the fee schedule is the fee schedule. It's basically been adopted. We did add all the land use categories, and we had to calculate that fee. So the decision was made when we added those, all those land use categories to update the T-sploss and sploss collections because that's what offsets certain fee, certain impact fee amounts. And so just to highlight a couple of changes, for example, the residential is going to go from $3,212 per unit to $3,241, and then commercial, they kind of go up and down. A motel goes from approximately $2,700 to a little over $1,000 per room. Shopping center decreases from a little over $12,000 to a little over $5,000, but nursing home and general office buildings will go up a little bit. And really, that has to do with the T-sploss and sploss collections being updated. So because this is first reading, there is, I'm not looking for a vote, but this is a public hearing because that is required under the Development Impact Fee statutes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any public comments on that? Okay. All right, that is the end of our public hearing, so we will take a vote to go back into our regular scheduled meeting. I need a motion to do that.
I make a motion to go back into the regular meeting.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll go back and we'll vote on these items individually. So the first item to vote is SD 314720, North Bryan Properties.
Make a motion to approve SD 3147-20.
Need a second on that?
Aye.
Okay, any discussion on that? Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Are we including the conditions?
On that property?
Yes.
Yes. You included conditions? Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, that motion carries. Okay. The next one is SD 3170-20, J.I. Interstate West Land.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible to put what we're voting on on the screen?
Excuse me?
Would it be possible to put what we're voting on on the screen? What I see is the last thing Audra presented, which was fee schedule.
Yes, Mr. Covington. I think, Brian, can we do that? He wants to put up on that what we're voting on on the screen. It's on page 120 of our presentation. Page 120.
Ready for a motion?
Can you see that? Mr. Covington?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. We'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for case SD 3170-20, that we approve the preliminary plat to establish the 100-foot wide right-of-way utility tract subject to the following conditions. Number one, the proposed sanitary sewer lift station shall be relocated with direct frontage along the dedicated right-of-way at an approved location. Lift station shall be designed in accordance with the current county and EPD standards. Number two, the proposed intersection at WarCal Parkway shall be positioned at an approved location, which also meets the county ordinance requirement.
Second by Mr. Price. Any discussion on that? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Motion carries, okay. We're down to Z 239-10, Faro Rezoni.
I make a motion to approve Z 239-10.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next one is the Comprehensive Land Plan Amendment for North Bryan for future land use map.
I make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for North Bryan Future Land Use Map.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that?
I do have just a question.
Okay.
You know, there's some smaller green areas. I mean, we are updating it just to include the properties we're discussing tonight. Why aren't those other areas included to make a cohesive purple areas? Just curious.
Everyone, we're talking about the Comprehensive Plan and the Future Land Use Map. We are required to update that every five years. And so, at our five-year update is whenever staff is doing that very comprehensive review of, you know, all the areas in the county and how they should be classified. Upon request by this commission, we can do amendments, which is what we undertook beginning in the end of December 2018, and adopted in December of 2020, where you directed us with a very specific mission on how to amend and what changes to look at. Outside of that, whenever we have a request from, originally initiated from an individual applicant representing individual property owners, we are tailoring that request very specific to what they are requesting. So, for that reason, we did not do any type of analysis, review, or, you know, consult studies to consider the further impact outside of that boundary.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favors, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, we're down to item five, which is Z 234-20, Commission Initiated Alcova, Blitston, and Timberlands Track. Motion on that?
I make a motion that we, for case Z 234-20, that we adopt the, that we approve the rezoning of Alcova, Blitston Track with the recommended condition.
Second. Second. Any discussion?
I would like to add, though, the, any and all of the drainage ditches, I know we have a plan in place to be cleaning the canals and all, but maybe we could push this to the forefront, get it done.
Are we in discussion?
Yeah.
Well, this, all of these conditions that are laid out will apply to all of these rezonings. Is that, is that correct?
Yes. When you do your motions, though, I need the conditions, I need the approval with the conditions for each particular rezoning number.
For the, the item that Mr.
Yes, as modified tonight.
The item that Mr. Forbes brought up, the, about the no vertical construction prior to water and sewer, is there any other options there? Because, I mean, I do know that is a common practice.
I would request that the engineering director come up on that one, because he handles the infrastructure. Kirk? Kirk? The question was, do we have any other options for the condition that states vertical construction cannot occur until the water and sewer infrastructure has been installed? And I said I would look to the engineering director to answer that question. Kirk, I can tell you that the commissioners online are not going to be able to hear you.
We've had some discussions with Thompson-Hunt with regard to that, and I think we have some latitude with the sewer. Water is probably a different issue, because that's got to do with fire protection, and we really have to have that in place. So, I don't know if there'll be another plan to take care of that. So, again, I think we're okay with sewer, if they're okay with having the water installed. No, I would say that we still want to make sure that we've got fire protection for the buildings, that's. I don't know if that's more of a legal question, though, as to what kind of exposure we have there if we're moving forward with building construction, and we get to the point where we don't have fire protection. I don't know if there's a way we can write some kind of protection in there for us that if that happens, we're not liable, we don't have exposure with regard to that. Really, on any issues that we're doing conditionally moving forward with building construction, except for the FEMA floodplain issues, we've got to follow the regs closely there. So, I don't know, Counselor, is that something that we can put some kind of condition on there? Again, our concern from staff has been, they got a building set, and we're not ready for fire protection. What, you know, what, what's our exposure to that? That's the concern.
To clarify, so that everyone.
Did the condition not limit grubbing and grading?
Say again, Commissioner Covington?
Did the, did the condition that was there, did it not also limit even the grubbing and grading of the site?
No, it's just the building to have the water and sewer, sewer infrastructure in.
Just the vertical building?
Correct, the vertical on having the actual infrastructure in the ground. And I, my recommendation on this, because it is kind of a complicated issue, especially with the fire flow and all that, since the water and sewer master plan isn't complete, hasn't been completely reviewed, as I said earlier in our workshop, these conditions are kind of my best effort with the information I have today. If we could maybe look at it this way, to say if you would approve the condition tonight, but staff would be amenable to working with the applicant, and once we get that water and sewer study done, and we get a better understanding of the timing and what's coming in, then maybe we can come back to you and recommend an amended condition, which would make everybody more comfortable.
Yes, I think that, that satisfies what I was concerned about.
Brad, do you want to try to restate your, with those conditions?
I've got one other question, since we're in the comment section, and, Audra, this would be for you, but the master development plan that must be approved by this board prior to really any work commencing, will that answer all of the questions, more of the, or not maybe all, but a lot of the questions that came up tonight in the public?
That is my intent with it, especially if they're going to do more individual development plans, because at that point, they could show you buffers, they could show you at least the conceptual drainage where the detention-retention ponds are going and all that. I'm not looking for engineered-level drawings, but just a more, more complete plan. So, yes, that is the intent.
And there, I guess the reason I ask that is, we are contemplating a rezoning, and oftentimes, that sparks a lot of interest from everybody, as it, you know, as it should. But even in those rezoning plans, we don't have everything, you know.
Correct.
Subdivision, we don't have everything. We don't know how many exact lots and the exact layout. It's all conceptual, like we saw tonight. And I know that you said that we are not required to have a public hearing, but I would like to make that, you know, add that as a, that this board would bring that master development as a public hearing. Would that be acceptable, or you feel like that would?
Absolutely, that is at your discretion, and I'm sorry, I did not bring my book forward. I'm going to grab it so I can state on the record which condition you're amending to say that the public hearing is required.
It would be general condition 1B.
Thank you.
Um, and just having said that for the benefit of the other commissioners, just, this, I know this is quick, but this does allow the public to come and speak to the buffers that are presented, speak to the lighting that's going to be designed, or the way the infrastructure's going to be laid out. Is that correct?
Yes, and in fairness to whoever buys the property, it also gives them an opportunity to respond to a request to say, can you give me a 500-foot buffer? They get the opportunity to respond and say, well, I really can't do 500, but can I do 300, or whatever it is, so that they also have, they also can participate in the process.
Ralph, is that fair? Right. 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 Restate my motion?
Yes.
Okay.
If you can.
Let's see if I can do this. Might need some help. Uh, for case Z 234-20, the rezoning of the Alcova and Blitston Track, I recommend approval of the rezoning to I-2 with the conditions that are proposed, and also adding that we, that the Board of Commissioners will require a public hearing for the master development plan when it is prepared, and that for item two, under water and sewer, general conditions related to water and sewer, that that condition would stand, knowing that the staff would work with the applicant to come up with an agreement to allow vertical construction, if all sides agree.
Second. Second, any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, we're down to our next, the next one here is the Z 235-20. I'm sorry. Z 234-20, the Alcova, Blitston, Timberlands Track?
No.
We just did that, I'm sorry, I heard one, sorry. Marked the wrong one out there. Herbert-Warnell Track. Need a motion on that one?
I make a motion to approve the Z 235-20.
Right, with, with recommended conditions?
Yeah, with the recommended conditions tonight, and I don't have to commit.
Okay.
Second, and then, does that include the conditions that, same conditions?
Yeah, same conditions.
Same conditions.
Can we say that, same conditions as the previous?
Yeah.
Because I didn't write it down, and I don't think I can.
I think the direction given was to incorporate the conditions as, as presented tonight with the revisions that were stated with the Blitston rezoning. For the respective zoning numbers, I do not have them in front of me, but 234 through.
Okay. Okay. All right, we got it. Take it on that, do you second it?
No, I'm on the motion.
Okay, motion, okay, we need it. Second that. Who seconded that?
Second.
Brad? Second, okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. All right, the next one is Z 236-20, Commission Initiated Res zoning for the Warnell Farm Track.
Mr. Chairman, case Z 236-20, the rezoning for the Warnell Farm Track, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning with the recommended board adopted conditions, along with the conditions stated in the previous item, or case Z 234-20, Alcova, Blitston Track.
Second. Second on that, any discussion on that? No discussion on that, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one is Z 237-20, Commission Initiated Res zoning for the Conley Track.
I make a motion, uh, to approve Z 238-20 with all the recommendations.
Recommended conditions, okay?
Recommended conditions, yeah.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I guess a question about the property and the possibility of it being a landlocked is concerning, and if there was a, I mean, could, did we add a deed restriction to the other properties that are going to be a part of this? That that would have to be resolved in the event of, I mean, I think I'm looking more towards, well, whoever can answer that? I mean, is that, is that a, is that a solution there?
I think there are multiple solutions to it, and that's why I would say at this point, I'm comfortable just acknowledging that we could potentially landlock it. We could do it through development agreement, we could do it through an individual transportation improvement agreement, we could do it on the plat. So, there's multiple opportunities to make sure those easements are there.
Okay, any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye. That's 237.
237, uh-huh.
Huh? It's 237-20?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I made the motion, Brad seconded it, I think.
You did on 238.
Did I, 238? 237, I'm making a motion to approve 237.
A lot of them think, okay, you got a second on that, Brad, still? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, now, we're on to Z 238-20, Davis Track.
I make a motion to approve 238 with all the recommendations.
Second. Second. Any, any discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Little delay there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, are we, or, I'm just curious, on the, on the votes here, is this unanimous, or, because it's coming in late?
Yeah, I think it is, yeah, it is.
I think we should probably clarify that.
I think it is.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my, my vote, this is Noah, all of my votes have been aye.
Okay. Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
He's got a little delay there.
Yes, mine have all been in favor, I'm passing.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that.
It sounded like someone saying opposed.
Okay, I don't think anybody said, okay, thank you. All right, item 10, the second reading of the zoning map for Bryan County. Motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the second reading and adopt the updated zoning map for Bryan County.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? Question? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Wait a minute, okay, all opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, we don't have to vote on 11, because that was the first reading. All right, we're down to our community development or non-public hearing item.
Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to make a few comments about those rezonings. And I think Commissioner Price said this, but I, it got kind of garbled with the internet delay, but there was a lot of concern about flooding on those early on, some of that discussion, and I think that we need to study, there's a canal, it runs down through there, it's a public canal, I'm pretty sure, a drainage ditch, and while these people are experiencing some flooding, I don't think it's. I don't think it's, it's probably not making it out the Eldora Road and going underneath the Eldora Road, so I think that, I would like to ask that we concentrate on getting public works to check that drainage canal and, and see what needs to happen to make sure that it is draining properly, and maybe it is, but I think we need to focus on getting that done sooner rather than later.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Covington, and George, that is noted.
Also, I would just, I would like to apologize, I know with the public, a lot of them may leave after this, but I'd like to apologize for not being there tonight, if I could, I would absolutely be there, and to you, I would apologize for not being able to make it, but this COVID thing is a real deal, and it's got me stuck at home, but I do appreciate the public that is there tonight, and those that stood up to speak, and I just want to make sure that, and I tell them that.
Thank you, Commissioner Covington. These are unprecedented times we're going through, so. All right, Amanda?
All right, this item is for rezoning requests, this is case number Z223-20, this was an application of Dennis George for the rezoning of a portion of the property located at 407 Deer Run Road. Now, just as a matter of record, this item was on your agenda at your December 8 meeting for a public hearing, at that time, staff made their initial presentation, and we heard the applicant's request to defer the item so that they could understand a little bit more about the impacts, or what would be expected of them if the property were to be rezoned, and so the item was deferred, we placed it back on your agenda this evening. Now, this is not listed as a public hearing item, because the public hearing occurred last month, however, I do want to note that the applicant hits here this evening, should you have any additional questions, it's at your discretion to have them approach the podium. So, just to refresh everybody's memory on what this request was for, the property in question is located on Deer Run Road, it is developed with a single-family residence, the primary access to the lot is on Deer Run Road, but there is secondary frontage along the rear of the property, which abuts Interstate Center Boulevard and the industrial park being developed by the Bryan County Development Authority. The applicant has requested to rezone the back portion of property, spanning about approximately 200 feet across and 250 feet in depth, accounting for about 50,000 square feet, to the B2 General Commercial zoning district. The intent of the applicant is to have that rear portion rezoned, so that they can establish a commercial restaurant on site. What we know from the applicant and the conceptual plans is that they are proposing an approximately 320-square-foot refrigerated-style container that comes pre-manufactured to include all the requirements of a commercial kitchen. Their intent is to operate this as a walk-up, carry-out restaurant only, with no indoor/outdoor seating, and the desire here is, is to capitalize on the industrial users within the industrial park and provide a food service option. Now, at both the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing, as well as your public hearing last month, staff expressed their concerns with this request. Primarily, we noted the intent of the comprehensive plan to keep those uses internal to the industrial park as an industrial uses under the existing industrial zoning districts, and for any future commercial development to occur along what we've identified as the commercial corridor, which would be those properties that have that direct frontage onto Highway 280. Staff remains concerned about the impacts that rezoning this back portion of the property to commercial could have, both on the adjacent and industrial uses, as well as the infringement of commercial uses onto the existing residential neighborhood that is currently intact along Deer Run Road. So with that, staff's recommendation to you was a recommendation for denial, we did not think that it was compatible with the vision of the comprehensive plan, and we did not find that it improved the overall zoning scheme of this area. Again, we also noted concerns that we would have with intermingling that commercial traffic with the industrial traffic that's really anticipated to be internal to the industrial park, and the further infringement of more intense commercial uses and the impacts that that could have on the existing residential neighborhood, which is currently pretty well buffered from the industrial park with those deep, long lots. So again, staff's recommendation was for denial, the planning and zoning's recommendation was for denial as well.
Yeah, I was, what about the industrial park, could, did they agree to meet all the requirements for the, the industrial park, the parks?
No, so, I mean, this property would not be a part of the, you know, those covenants and restrictions under the Development Authority, because this is not property that's, that's owned by the Development Authority. With their intent to have a refrigerated container-style restaurant, don't know if that's going to meet any of the design standards that the Architectural Review Board for the industrial park would, would want to impose. This is a distinctly different type of use than what the industrial park currently sees.
Good, thank you.
I believe Commissioner Covington brought up last time that we really need, we really need places to eat here, where we have, we have this, there's not enough restaurants, to be honest with you, so I'd love to see it. It's tough, but I'm going to make a motion to approve it, 233-20.
Okay, we need a second on that? Ain't no second on that? No, it's for lack of second. We would go to another motion, please? Huh? Yes, okay, we need another motion. On that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a, make a motion that we deny the request of rezoning for the Dennis George Track.
Okay. Second on that motion?
I second, this is Noah.
Okay, any discussion on that? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, all right, so that motion denied 4 to 1. The next is the engineering non-public hearing items, water and sewer agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, first item for your consideration tonight is the water and sewer agreement with North Bryan Properties. Amanda had alluded to this before in the application that you just approved. This basically lays out the agreement between us and North Bryan Properties, where they would construct the water and sewer infrastructure, and then we would provide them sewer capacity based on a takedown schedule, it's part of this agreement. We're, we're recommending that the commission, the chairman author, or execute the water and sewer agreement with North Bryan Properties.
There will be a turn of motion to that.
Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to execute the water and service, water and sewer service agreement with North Bryan Properties LLC.
I second that motion.
Being seconded, okay?
Second.
Discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. A traffic contribution agreement?
Yes, sir, the second item would be the JI Interstate Westland Traffic Contribution Agreement. This is the second agreement with JI Westland, the first one was their water and sewer agreement. This is the, the second that would provide their fair share pro-rata funding for the intersection, the signal at the intersection at Orecal Parkway and Interstate Center Boulevard, and again, we're recommending that the chairman authorize, be authorized to execute that agreement.
We need a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to execute traffic contribution agreement with JI Interstate Westland LLC.
Second.
I second.
All right, any discussion on that?
Yeah, Commissioner, Chairman, if you would, Kirk doesn't mind explaining, just so that the public will hear, about the, about the red light there, and, and the fact that traffic count's got to get up, if you, Kirk, if you'll explain that, why we, we're getting these contributions, but we're not quite there with the traffic study yet.
Certainly, as this is an intersection on a state right-of-way, we've got to follow their protocol and guidelines, and as part of that, it has to meet what they call warrant analysis for the installation of that signal, so until we have the, the significant counts that would meet that threshold to be able to move forward with the design, we can't, we can't move forward. Even though we have funding, and we're starting to get the funding together through these contributions, we still have to wait and go through their guidelines.
How long, do you think that might be?
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any idea on how long?
It's, it's all volume-based, so we've already talked to Thomas and Hutton about going out and doing counts sporadically. We can, we can authorize that to be done next week, or wait for a month, it just, it all depends until we meet those volumes.
I mean, I can drive back and forth, you know, all day long, and that'd help.
I get, you, you could, if you, if you wanted to do that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor on that, say aye. All opposed? Okay, that carries. Okay, engineering design manual.
Yes, item number three is the engineering design manual. We took the opportunity with the creation of the UDO and the drafting of that, to pull out the engineering-related items within that, they were kind of feathered in through that, or original ordinance, they were difficult to find, some were pretty outdated, so, again, we used, we took the opportunity to pull those out and put them into one document, which is now going to be considered the engineering design manual. This will amend the UDO, and the UDO does refer to this for the engineering design. Also, that, as part of this, we created a deck of details, construction details, which, again, needed updated and revised, so we, we did that along with that, that would also become an amendment to the UDO along with the engineering design manual. Recommendation is, again, for the board to approve the design manual as part of the UDO.
Chairman, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, recommend the approval of the engineering design manual, which is incorporated into the UDO as an appendix.
Second on that?
Thank you.
Commissioner Price, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, the award of Henderson Park Gym Project.
Yes, sir, this is in relation to the bids that we received with regard to that, as you remember, we had a pre-qualification list put together, and out of that pre-qualification list, we had five bids that were submitted, out of the seven that were pre-qualified. The low bid is an amount of $6,599,000 by Pope Construction, and I'll point out that prior to this bid, we did two cost estimates that came in the range of about $8 million, so this was a very pleasant surprise for us to get a bid like that. Pope Construction is working on the schools, so they're, they're a good contractor, they're local, again, they're working on the Board of Ed, with the Board of Ed on their, on their big high school campus, and they just finished up the elementary school over on Warren Hill Road. Any questions with regard to that?
Any questions?
Okay, recommendation is for the authorization of the contract, an amount of $6,599,000.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend, or make a motion to award the Henderson Park Gym and Soccer Complex contract to Pope Construction in the amount of $6,599,000, in accordance with the December 28, 2020 GMC contract recommendations.
Second.
Second, that motion.
Okay, and I normally ask everybody to raise their hand, but since we're all on Zoom, I will take a vote if there's no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh-uh, there's some hand trouble. Okay, thank you. All right, all opposed, okay, that motion carries, thank you. All right, the 2021 GDOT LMEG road program.
Yes, sir, last item for engineering this evening is the LMEG program for 2021. As you see there, we were, we were allocated $439,068.56 from GDOT, as part of that, we have a 30% match of $131,720.57. The administrator has also allocated additional funds through TSPLOST as part of that program, and it brings our total up to 1.2 million for our road program this year, so we're recommending authorizing, authorizing the chairman to execute the LMEG application, so we can send that to GDOT, and then move forward with the road program this year. And there's a description of what we have on it this year, basically, we want, like to finish up the Oak Point subdivision that we had started last year, also doing Belfast-Caller Road from 144 to the new roundabout, paving Seascape Road, and also overlaying Jerusalem Church Road.
All of them on the south? All of them on the south end?
Everything except Jerusalem Church, and we have, and we're working on the roundabout, to point out, for the Wilma Edwards Road Roundabout.
Wilma Edwards Roundabout, okay.
So, Kirk, was that, that road from, you said from the intersection of Oak Level 144 to the roundabout?
Yes, sir.
That's where in front of Gene lives, and that road by the?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's all rough, I know, I rode it the other day.
Yes, gotta go past Oak Point subdivision.
Yeah, okay, that's right, okay, all right. All right, we need a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the LMEG projects that Kirk has listed out here.
Second. Second, any discussion? All right, thank you, all right. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Item number one on the agenda is appointment of a vice chairman. Look back to that. Each year, the Board of Commissioners appoints one of its members as vice chairman, for a number of years, the Board of Commissioners has been using the rotation of the fifth district, followed by the third district, followed by the fourth district, second district, and then the first district. Vice chairman for 2020 was Noah Covington. Under this proposed rotation, which has got to be adhered to, however, it's been the tradition many years, proposed vice chairman for 2021 will be the fifth district commissioner, Gene Wallace, if so appointed. Need a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve Gene Wallace, fifth district.
Second.
As vice chairman.
Second, any discussion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries, okay, appointment of county attorney? Item two on the agenda is appointment of county attorney, in January of each year, the Board of Commissioners appoints the county attorney, Lehman Holliday, has been serving as county attorney since December 2014.
Make a motion to approve Lehman Holliday, county attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? Long time? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item three is the appointment of the JDA Board, Carter Enfinger currently serves on the Savannah Harbor Interstate sixteen corridor joint development authority, his term is set to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, um, it is, uh, on this board sit the chairman of each county, and then the CEO of the Development Authority, uh, that's the standard practice, and the Bryan County Development Authority is recommending Mr. Enfinger here with the standard practice of the other participating counties to be reappointed to this board with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion on that?
Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint, or reappoint Carter Enfinger to the JDA Board with a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item four on the agenda is a budget item, as approved in the twenty twenty-one budget, uh, it is the, uh, trade-in of existing backhoe for two thousand, or existing motor grader for two thousand twenty-one, John Deere sixty-seven two G motor grader, uh, with a Brom sloper, staff recommends five-year, seventy-five-hundred-hour lease with, uh, five annual payments of forty-nine, four, four, five, and sixty-four cents, and a, uh, buyout at one forty-two, six, eleven. Motion on that one?
I'm making a motion to, uh, trade in the Caterpillar motor grader versus John Deere, whatever he said.
Need a second?
I don't have it in front of me.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, yeah, I think this may work. All right, all opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Sheriff's Department budget amendment. Item five on the agenda is approval of the two thousand twenty-one Sheriff's Department budget amendment, with the new year came, when the new year came, a newly elected sheriff also, uh, arrived, of course, as with any change of personnel, uh, Sheriff Crowe has new visions, new priorities for the twenty twenty-one, uh, budget, the budget process, of course, took place, uh, before he arrived, uh, and under the direction of the previous sheriff, we expected some budget amendments, uh, Mr., uh, Sheriff Crowe has requested additional four vehicles, a total cost of two hundred thousand dollars, these vehicles will be used for implementation of a traffic unit, uh, like I say, this was expected, a budget amendment is necessary for purchase of these additional, uh, vehicles, the recommendation is that the Bryan County Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution to approve this, uh, budget amendment as reflected in the attached, uh, page labeled Exhibit A.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, or amend the, uh, the sheriff's budget for twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, right, that brings down the public comments, there's no public comments here, Commissioner comments, thank you, Deputy Waters, for staying here, we appreciate you, all ladies, take care of the gym, we appreciate y'all, um, we're going to have to, a vote to go into executive session now, motion going to executive session. Huh? To discuss legal-
Mr. Chairman.
And personnel matters.
I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're now in executive session. Yeah. There's just that one, man.